Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the January 9th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we start our meeting, if you could check your cellphones, make sure they're either turned off or silent, would appreciate that on that. I'm happy to see all the attendees out there. We like to have the public input on our meetings here. To start off, I'd like to have the commission members introduce themselves. Jim, would you like to start?
Good morning. My name is Jim Kloszuski. Thank you for coming, and Happy New Year.
Good morning. I'm Susan Graham. Great to see you all here.
Good morning. I'm Tom Hutchison. Happy New Year, and it's great to see you all.
Hi, I'm Tom Riley, and after the meeting, ask me if it's great to see you all.
Hi, Tom Davis. Good morning. Happy New Year.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Gambolji attending the meeting here, too. This is an open, public hearing and being videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public and local cable and/or radio stations, and may be also rebroadcast. The number of commission members present is six. It will require a majority of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date, if necessary, on that. Before we start that, Tom would like to make a little announcement, I believe.
Well, I want to recognize, first of all, Councilwoman Rusing, who just came in, and also like to recognize Sandy Griffiths, who is not only the CEO of the Yavapai County Contractors Association, but she's also on the Planning and Zoning Commission for Yavapai County and for Prescott Valley. And she's here at this meeting to learn how it's done.
And Sandy, that's the reason we don't allow weapons in here. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the December 12th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections, is there a motion concerning the minutes?
So moved.
Tom Riley.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Tom Davis.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Jacob, would you call?
Commissioner Kloszuski?
Pass.
Commissioner Hutchison?
I approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Davis?
Approve.
Vice Chair Riley?
Approve.
Chair Michaelman?
Approve.
Next item on the agenda is REZ 24-003 and GPA 24-001. Tammy, are you up?
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman. Members of the commission, Tammy Dewitt, community planner. You have seen this request, a similar request, previously back in May of 2024. Since then, it hadn't gone any further than the Planning and Zoning Commission. They kind of rethought about the project. So we have three parcels, which equals .6 acres, that are zoned "single-family," and the rest of the property for the project area is zoned "multifamily," "high-density." So they're proposing to rezonate the three parcels that have historically been used as a parking area, when it was used by Yavapai County Development Services, to rezonate it to "multifamily," high, to allow for apartments to be on that, in that area. So past uses of the building, we know this building has a lot of history. It's been used as a hospital, Yavapai County Development Services, but it's been vacant since the Yavapai County Development Services moved out in September 2012. So here's imagery of the property. The previous request that you saw was for 90 units, which the existing zoning would allow. Without this rezoning, they would be allowed a maximum of 90 units on-site. The reason before you saw this back in May was because they had a building that was proposed on that area. So that's what triggered the rezoning request. So that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended approval 4 to 0. But they're come back now for a request to... All those buildings were two-story before. Now they're proposing 106 units, which would be the maximum allowed with the rezoning, and a couple of the buildings to be three stories. So again, this kind of shows the area. So here's the site plan that we have now. So we have, let's see if this is going... Okay. So this one, that one, that one's two-story. This one is three-story, which belong here. And then this one, I believe, is all three-story, and this is two-story. So they changed the site plan a little bit to increase the height, which still is allowed by the multifamily high-density of 35 feet, which is the same as a single-family residence. The reason for the rezoning request is because they do have a building, and they're asking for the increase in density from 90 to the 106 units, which is the max allowed with the rezoning. Without the rezoning, if this was denied, they would have to not have a building in that area, and they'd be allowed a maximum of 90 units. So again, these are subject properties. The general plan did have it as low-to-medium-density residential. So with the rezoning request, we do also have a minor map amendment to the general plan to change it to the medium-high-density residential with the rezoning request. So here's the area that we're looking at. It is the, exists the parking area that was historically used. And then here's the existing building that is in the process of being demoed. These are issues that we look into, consistency with the area that meets all our code requirements. This has been reviewed by our reviewing agencies. We did have some questions about the Fair Housing Act. They do have an exception that you can apply for, for senior housing. This doesn't qualify, because they're only proposing 27 of the units to be used for senior. If they wanted to use the HOPA, which is Housing for Old People Act, does exist, that they would have to have 80% of the units be senior. They'd have to ask for exemption from Fair Housing Act to do that, but they're not. So they're proposing 27 of the units to be used for senior housing, and the applicant can address that more about how the other tenants or their other apartments, what they're seeing. We are a retirement community. A majority of our population is retired, so we are seeing a lot of these apartments being rented by seniors. It has been reviewed. It is a conceptual site plan, so if it is approved and we move forward to permitting, this will be looked at more closely in more detail as plans will be submitted at that The property is bound by residential and office-type uses, so the multifamily does allow for diverse uses, and this is close to downtown, which makes sense to have multifamily close to the downtown areas. Again, compliance with the general plan, this is requiring a minor general plan map amendment for the rezoning. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tammy?
Yeah, I have some. Tammy, with respect to our new general plan, can you take us, the commission and the public, through why this is vital to the city? What this represents going forward?
What? I'm confused, but what's...
Why are we looking for this type of housing in the city of Prescott?
Well, this isn't being considered workforce housing. It is just going to be apartments, which is a different type of housing, that variety that we look to have in the city. If you look in the general plan, that's the next item on the agenda. As you see, historically, we've had very little multifamily projects coming forward. We are seeing a lot more over the last couple of years of apartment-type uses coming in, which gives a different variety, a type of housing. The applicant has stated that this is going to be fair market value. It's not workforce housing or any other subsidy housing. It's just standard apartments for rent. Does that help answer your question?
Well, I was hoping you'd go a little deeper than that, but the general idea is we need this more than we need single-family homes on big lots.
Yes. It is a need in the city.
And that's vital to our survival going forward?
Yes.
Tammy? Tammy, Jim Kloszuski, you got to help me connect the dots here. So we're going to increase, we're being asked to increase the density by 26 units, or 27? I thought it was 89? 16 to 100?
So 90 to 106. So it's 16 units.
That's such a gift for having meetings this early. But the request has to do with the building on-site. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so if they're just doing 90 units, which the existing zoning would allow, in this area, so the red highlighted areas on the site plan, that's the area that's considered under the rezoning request. So with the 90 units, if they didn't have a building there, and they were just using it for parking, and they were just doing the 90 units, you wouldn't be seeing this project at all. Because they're wanting to put a building in that area, and they're now asking for the maximum with the rezoning request, that the rezoning is now required to allow for the 106 units and for a building in that area.
When you're speaking of building, you're talking about another apartment building?
Yes, this, this one right here. If this wasn't here and was on another place of the property, and then this was all just a parking area, and they were just doing 90 units, you would not be seeing this request.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out what precipitated them wanting to add an extra building in that area.
And I'll have to defer you to the applicant to answer those questions.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Tammy, Tom Davis. Can you, I recall the action that we took in May, last May, on this project. Can you tell us what actually we did with regards to this?
You approved it, recommended approval 4 to 0 for the 90 units that was proposed at that time. Since then, they've added a story on some of the buildings to add 16 more units, which would be the maximum allowed with the rezoning request.
And there was no minor general plan amendment?
Yes, there was.
There was?
Yes.
Okay, what was that action?
That was the same. They were taken together, so it was...
Same thing as what we're doing?
Yes.
Susan?
The number, what were the number of parking spaces per the plan in May versus the plan now? Number one, and my second question is probably more for the applicant as to where the senior apartments will be, whether or not the seniors are going to have to walk up two or three So that will probably have to be addressed to the applicant.
Yeah, we've been talking to them about how the senior, to quantify that. It would be done at permitting. They're going to have to submit us in writing, to us in writing with their building permits, which units in that 27 units are going to be used for senior housing. With the additional 16 units, it probably added another 16 parking spaces, possibly. I didn't compare that for the number, but...
They mentioned that they could reduce the number of parking spaces with increasing the number of senior units, so I wasn't sure what the mix was now of the parking spaces.
They're proposing 27 units to be senior. So that reduced the required parking by 27 parking spaces.
So do we have a total number of parking spaces based on the May plan versus the plan now?
I don't have the May plan in front of me, so, but it also had senior units on that, too. I don't have the numbers in comparison.
I do have some numbers. There's a total of 153 spaces that are available for the 106 units in this particular plan.
Yeah. I guess one of my other concerns is that when this was pitched to us in May, the developer is saying it would be less obtrusive with sticking with two stories, and now they are proposing three stories.
I'll have to defer that to the applicant, why they've changed their, the development.
Tammy, could, I would like to walk through each of those buildings there, if you don't mind. Which ones are the two-story? Which ones are the three? And what is adjacent to the buildings? And we can start on the left, if we look at, on the west side there.
So, let's see if it'll work. So this is two-story. This is three-story.
Now, three-story there, what is behind that? That's commercial?
Residential and offices.
Which, single-family residence?
Office uses. Their office uses is along here.
All right, so that's more commercial right behind that. All right, drop down?
Okay. Then this is a three-story, and then these are, this is a residence here.
So now we're going to have a residence right behind the three-story building?
Yes.
Wow.
And this one's two-story, and there's residential up here and residential on this side, and this is a three-story, and that's two-story.
Now, the one on the east side there, the three-story, there's residential to the right of that, but they're up on a hill.
They're up on a hill, yes.
Now, are they high enough up on the hill that they're not being blocked out by the three-story building?
There is a picture. Possibly. I mean, looking at the picture here, unless they're going to go down a little bit, that's the closest house, is right here. So it looks like it possibly, I mean, 35 feet is allowed for a single, if somebody put a single-family residence there, they can go 35 feet. So what's being proposed, it doesn't exceed that allowance at all.
All right. My concern is they put a building in there blocking out the view of that house, in a sense. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Tammy? Would the applicant like to make a presentation to the commission? Would the applicant like to come up and answer questions for the commission?
One of you guys needs to pull the short straw.
Yeah.
Good morning, commission. Is this better? Great. Well, yeah, as you can see, we have revamped our site plan. In our opinion, this is a better layout. These three-story buildings that you see will have elevators attached to them. The two-story buildings will have stairs. Of course, the three-story buildings will also have stairs for egress. We have, I don't have the exact numbers, but we did increase our parking count from our May submittal to now as well.
Also need your name, sir.
Oh, my name is Johnny Stewart, sorry.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Tom?
Is the finished floor of the building that is highlighted in the red right now, is the finished floor going to be about the same elevation as the parking lot that's there now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Jim Kloszuski, so I don't recall without having the notes here, was the original plan all two stories?
Yes.
Can you explain your justification, please, for going to three stories now on your different units and adding the additional building? Is that an additional building that's being added where it's highlighted in red?
So it's actually the same number of buildings from the original submittal. It's just that two of the buildings are now three stories, and we just think that it's a better layout. It's a better use of the space. It provides more affordable, not, I don't want to say affordable housing as in the actual designated term of affordable housing, but it provides more of an affordable place for more places that are affordable for people to live. To us, it's maximizing the site for its highest and best use.
And why wasn't that presented the first time around when we approved the project?
We actually, through the, through the first initial meetings that we did, we were actually forced to do the math a lot better on the amount of units that we could do. And we actually understood that we, we actually thought that we could only do 90 units, but when we were actually forced to go through the exercise of detailing all of the square footages that we were allowed to do, we figured out that we could actually fit 106 units on here.
The rent, the monthly rent for these units, I presume you're going to be going with whatever the market will bear.
So the studies that the ownership team has done is that currently the market rate for apartments like this are around $2,400 a month.
You didn't exactly answer the question, sir. Are you going to go with market or not?
Oh, yes, yeah.
And can you tell me what the original number of parking spaces were, based on the May plan?
I can't. I was trying to look through the old submittal on our phone, but the old, the old packet for the Planning and Zoning Meeting previously cut off our title block where we showed the number of units.
I have a question. Are you going to proceed with this project if you don't get, if the city council doesn't approve the rezoning?
Yes. Yeah, so what we would, what we would do is that building in the, in the red square, that would just be our parking lot. The rest of the buildings would stay as-is.
On the building on the east side, the three-story one, how does that compare to the houses that are already there? Are you going to be blocking views?
Our intent is to not block views. In fact, we actually, the two, the three two-story buildings that you see, and then the two three-story buildings is our best attempt at not blocking any ones' views.
Now, you're going to, the small one at the, on the left side, on the south there, you're going to be putting a three-story there and was going to be a two-story. And there are residential houses right behind that.
The one that you're talking about, that small one, is in fact a two-story.
Can you mark that so we make sure we're talking about the same one, Tammy?
The what? Sorry, I was looking for you.
The two-story, the two-story at the bottom of the page.
Thank you. Wait, what?
Down, nope.
That's the one I'm talking about, the one she was on originally.
Okay.
Now, that's going to be a three-story?
Yeah, that's going to be a three-story.
And there are houses right behind that, very close to it?
Yeah.
Now, the smaller one on the right is a two-story.
Correct. That one is closer to houses, and that one, that one is intentionally a two-story to not block the view, and we think that we're far enough away, and will be down low enough on the three-story to not block the other residential views as well.
Have you given any thought to trying to make part of this project workforce housing? We have more need probably for workforce housing than we do for $2,400 apartments.
You know, I know that we've been talking, I know the ownership has been talking a lot about that type of housing, but I don't have an answer for you.
Is the owner here?
Yeah.
Would you like to address that, sir?
And while he's coming up, I do have the number for you. Before, in the previous site plan, we had 146 parking spaces, and it looked like five of those units were considered for senior at the time.
So it's 146 parking spaces for the original plan and 153 now. So, so that's, and you're increasing the number of units by 16, and the number of parking spaces has not really changed that much.
The number of senior, proposed senior units has changed, which reduces the parking count, yeah.
Right, but a lot of seniors still have two cars.
Sir, if you could introduce yourself, please?
Mark Van Warmer. Regarding the cost, the cost is, the rental rate's going to be about $2 a square foot. So we have one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, so the $2,400 that Johnny stated would be the maximum rent in this complex at the current rates.
What would be the lower rent?
It would be based on our smallest units, which we haven't defined yet, but they're single-bedroom units. I'm going to tell you to be around $1,500. And then, to address the view shed, what's not accurately represented here is the topography. So to the east and to the south of the project, and in the picture that Tammy showed, there's significant increase in grades. So the homes that you can see there behind the project, I'm going to tell you, were 40 feet above the parking lot that's, that's in the foreground there. And then conversely, on the west side of the project, there's a significant drop-off there as well. So we're not impacting anyone's views to the west of the project, to the east of the project, to the south of the project. There is one home that we felt like we would impact if we went three stories, and so it intentionally was made a two-story building.
What will be the height of your three-story buildings?
Not going to exceed 35.
Okay.
I don't have the exact height yet.
You're going to have any mechanicals on the buildings, on the tops, on the roofs?
Unlikely, no. It'll be inside the units.
Okay. Will there be vent pipes, so forth on that?
Yes, sir, it has to be, yeah.
Are you planning to paint those so that they're not reflective?
Absolutely, yeah.
Questions for the applicant? I have a, my own personal thing is on workforce housing.
Yeah.
I have been involved with trying to work with workforce housing for about 30 years now, and I'd like to see more... And I'd like to see more of it. And I'm not sure $1,400 a month for a one-bedroom apartment is really workforce housing on it. It would be nice if you could have at least part of the units there, more for workforce housing there too, because that's what's going to be needed downtown.
We've had some preliminary conversation with the city about it. We're absolutely open to having more conversation about workforce housing.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you taking time to come and talk to us.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any discussion on this before we proceed to a motion? Jim?
I would just like to make a statement, I guess. When the applicant has referred to the reason for the change as highest and best use and offering more opportunities to the public, I interpret that as increasing cash flow and profit. So I'm not really excited that we approved something and we had a lot more people, I think, the first time around. I've kind of viewed it a little bit as a breach of public trust.
I feel the same way as well.
Any other comments?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Chairman, Tom Davis. I recall our conversations in May, my conversation at least, about this, and that I was a little disappointed there wasn't more transition from the lower density surrounding development, even though it's zoned for higher density. And I'm all for higher-density workforce housing type of, in this particular area. But I was really happy with, I guess I shouldn't say really happy, but I was really pleased with the results of our discussion and the previous approval. I'm not, I'm not that excited about this additional 16 units and less parking in three-story buildings and stuff. I think we were pushing the envelope the last time. And so that's where, that's where I stand with this.
Wow, is all I can say right now. First of all, if somebody wants to use their property to the highest and best use, that they're allowed to use it, and ask for exceptions to be able to increase that is something of a right. The fact that we're taking into consideration that somebody's going to make more money, that is not something we should be considering. And quite frankly, as long as that flag is flying out front, I don't think it's any of our dang business. So I think, you know, and I, me for myself, I think that the project is going to be the highest and best use. I like the way that they've gone about spreading out the buildings and the way that they talked about the three-story buildings and their locations and their relationship to the, to the adjacent properties, in my opinion, is well done. And frankly, just this little tiny piece of land that we're talking about here isn't going to make a hill of beans difference in what the impact of this apartment complex is going to have in this particular area. So I, for one, am in favor of this. And we've even had people in the area that come up and say that they're in favor of it.
Tom, do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Tom Hutchison here. Following this item is a comprehensive look at the new tenure plan. And in that plan, there's a copious amount of information about why it's important for us to have infill projects that, that aren't single-family homes on big lots. And that's critical going forward to the city's survival, to its sustainability. And that, that spelled out very, very clearly in the plan. So in my mind, this fits very nicely with what we're saying we want to do going forward over the next 10 years. And in that, our exceptions to zoning, exceptions to parking, and on and on and on and on. And we don't need to go into that. But to me, this fits nicely with where we think the city needs to go over the next 10-year period.
Susan?
When we were discussing this back in May, I believe someone asked about a traffic analysis, and one had not been done at that time. Has one been done now, number one? And number two, I am still concerned about the parking constraints regarding this project.
A traffic impact analysis has not been required at this time. It'll be required before permitting.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Public comment.
Excuse me, sorry about that, not trying to ignore you all. Jacob, who's first?
My God, it's a good thing the lawyers.
First speaker is Paul Landis.
Good morning. My name is Paul Landis. I live at 338 Outlook Circle, which is a property which adjoins this project. There's an old saying, once bitten, twice shy. And I think you're probably feeling it right now. When we met last time, it was 90 doors, seven buildings, two stories. Or else, if you didn't give them those three lots, they were going to have to go to three-story buildings. You guys made the decision, okay, 90 doors, two-story buildings. It seems to me, and I think there's others in the audience here are going to think, well, that was a pretty easy deal, we got that. Let's see if we can squeeze one more golden egg out of this goose. And they've come back to you with 106 doors and three stories, something they said in an earlier meeting that they weren't going to do. Parking spaces, 143 originally, now 152. It's not that number at all. It's 133 parking spaces for residents, look at the plan, and 24 visitor parking. They don't have 152 parking spaces for residents. That's directly on the plans that they showed to us on December 19th at a meeting in the Prescott Library. What I'm asking today, make it a little harder on these guys when they're coming back for a second bite at the apple. We'd like to see some things that would work better for the community in the plan, such as perimeter fencing, a traffic study, as you suggested, the aesthetics of the community, of not just having parking lots and dumpsters out in front of Marina Street, the view. Put that stuff in the back. There's one other point I'd like to make, and I've heard here, is that it seems like it's an either-or, single-family housing or apartments. You say, you're talking about all the single-family housing in the area, but there's a whole group right in the middle of that, that I spoke to last time, which is townhomes or condominiums, if you want to talk about best and highest value for the community and create equity opportunities for homeownership with a governing HOA within the community. I think that would go a long ways towards appeasing some of the concerns that we have. Thank you for listening this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. There will not be outbursts during this meeting. This meeting will be in decorum, and everybody has the right to their opinions and the right to express them. If there are outbursts in the future, I may take actions. Am I clear? Okay. Next person?
Next speaker is Veronica Grace.
Good morning. I'm Veronica Grace. I live at 536 South Marina Street. I also own 534 South Marina Street and a couple of other properties in downtown Prescott. I'll start by saying thank you for the work that you do. I can imagine you probably have more joy spending your time in other ways, so I appreciate the work you put into this. I'll also say, as I said before, I really love downtowns. I am a huge fan of the community that it creates. I think in our world today, it's hard to find community, and it's worth fighting for. I think Prescott is in particular, in particularly very unique. It is very kind, community-oriented, and high-character downtown. And I'll reiterate that I don't think any of us live here or visit here to see strip malls or to see things that are out of character. We choose Prescott because it is so beautiful, so unique, and people have fought to preserve it over time. I applaud my neighbors who are here to continue to fight to preserve the character of our downtown. I also support higher-density housing, and I'd like to reiterate the point that Paul just made. It's not either-or. I don't think any of us here are proposing, make these single-family homes. I think what we're proposing is a compromise, recognizing that we are putting high-density housing and very-high-density housing up against single-family homes. Our code allows for RT zoning, residential transition zoning, which to Councilman Davis' point earlier, provides that transition, provides, according to the code, a buffer between high-density and single-family to minimize impacts, create a bridge, is what our code says. I appreciate that this was probably added to our code too late. It was added after we have already defined these MFH zones and these SF zones. We can't go back in time and say, oops, we should have created some transition points. We can't do that. But this proposal that we're looking at today goes exactly the opposite direction. We have an opportunity right now with this decision to actually go some step toward a residential transition spirit. I'd also like to come back to a point I made last May. These developers are asking for a gift from this city. This gift, based on very simple math, 17 units, market rates, which we just heard, estimating $2,000 to $2,500 a month, this gift that they're asking for is worth half a million dollars a year, in perpetuity, forever and always. That's the gift they want. It will increase over time with inflation, but that's what they're asking for, is an extra gift from we, the city, of $500,000. Unlike other areas of the code, which are very prescriptive, for example, the calculations, very prescriptive, we do not have to approve this request. We do not have to say, yes, this gift is yours. We can choose to deny this request. And I'd love to come back to the considerations that were highlighted earlier, because what LDC 9.15.5 actually says is that the issues for consideration shall include but not be limited to the items A through E that we saw earlier. And I want to zoom in on that. Shall include, that means these A through E must be considered, but not be limited to. So what you're hearing from this neighborhood today, I really hope you consider. I heard a comment earlier, I think Commissioner Riley, that this is not a big deal. This is not super impactful. For those of us who live around this three-plus acre parcel, this is dramatic. This is a really big deal to us. And when I think of the character of the downtown of Prescott, this is a big deal. Where else do we have an infill lot of three-plus acres in our downtown? Do we have another, anything on the order of magnitude in downtown? I don't think we do. I'm ultimately concerned about that character, but when I think about our neighborhood and the nearby homes, mostly single-family, a few two-to-four multiplexes, nothing comes even close to the character of this development. I also think that what we've seen now in revision two of this site plan are additional nonconformances with our code. The first version did not comply to code. This version does not comply to code. And I'd like to just share some highlights of those nonconformances. Our code requires parking at the back of buildings where practical. I cannot understand why it is impractical to put the parking at the back of the buildings, so that this feels like a residential street, so that this feels like a neighborhood, so that this does not feel like a Lowe's parking lot. Our code also requires buffering between MFH and RS. On this map that we're looking at, I see zero buffering. I see absolutely no buffering. Your question earlier, Commissioner Michaelman, about what is next to that three-story building? I own that house. It's less than 15 feet away from what's being proposed. There's no buffering, none. I'll highlight that, as the developer, Mark, mentioned earlier, significant grade on this lot that's hard to understand by looking at this, at this flat map, significant grade. And a lot of that ground exceeds 20% in my estimation. I can appreciate that those calculations haven't been made yet, but our city engineering standards require where we have excessive 20% grade, a maximum disturbable area. For example, if that's limited to 20 to 30% maximum grade, I expect some areas are higher, honestly, the maximum disturbable area is 30%. When I look at this, there is no land that is not disturbed. No matter what, we're not allowed, we're not going to be allowed, under code, our very code, to disturb up to 70% of that graded area. But our developers have not incorporated that at all into the site plan. I've also taken note of our city code that calls out a maximum number of driveways, which is trying to encourage that traffic movement within the site is happening within the site, not on the street. We are exceeding the maximum number of driveways here. I really want to come back to the senior parking calculation. I previously presented a question to our planning team about this, for which I've not received a response. I'm glad that Tammy addressed it at some level, but I don't think it went far enough. I did question of our team, how we can designate apartments as senior living. How is that legally acceptable under the Fair Housing Act? It is not. I, as a landlord, cannot say, this apartment, I only rent to 21-year-olds. This apartment, I do not rent to you because you're not 40 to 50 years old. I cannot discriminate that way. And we, the city, cannot endorse this level of discrimination. This is simply not allowed under the Fair Housing Act. The amendment that was mentioned earlier, the Housing for Older Persons Act, is meant to address the scenario of, for example, a 55 and older community, which we know, we have many of those. There's a test applied. It requires 80% of residents meet that criteria. This apartment complex does not fall into this category at all. We cannot designate an apartment for seniors. I challenge this legally, and I think that if we go down this path, the city will be challenged. I think we are at risk. The end result of this, to Commissioner Graham's point, is that we need to see another 27 parking spaces. We cannot just, on the ruse of senior apartments, reduce our parking requirement by 27 spots. So we are missing 27 spots on this plan. The last thing that I'll call out, and this is less nonconformance with code, but a discrepancy that I can't simply understand. All of the calculations that we're talking about, 90 units, 106 units, is based on a total property of 3.5 acres. On the site plan that I reviewed at the community meeting on December 19th, it totals to 3.5 acres. Yet this letter I received from the city says 3.279 acres. Everything I've seen today says 3.279 acres. This delta of .221 acres, where is it? What is it? I don't understand. I also don't understand, and have not been able to get a solid answer, around the previous abandonment of a right-of-way on one section of Marina Street that is between these properties, whether that has to be given back to the city as a right-of-way. Similarly, public utility easement, does that need to give, give them back to the city? And is that currently being used in these calculations? I don't understand the numbers. I wish I did, because I'd like to just trust in those numbers. But I think that we actually need to audit these numbers. They are, they don't make sense, and just this discrepancy alone of 3.5 to 3.279 is the equivalent of six to seven units in the calculation. So as you consider the value of this rezone to the developer, this gift that we're about to give them if you approve it, I ask that you also consider the value to this neighborhood of not approving this rezone. We are all going We are all going to live through this. This is going to happen. We are going to have a lot of short-term pain associated with years, I imagine, of excavation and construction, a jumble of vehicles, noise. Likely some of us who work from home will have to leave our properties because it will be so loud. When the sandblasting happened two years ago on this building, I had to leave my home to work because it was so loud. I imagine I will have to live through that again, and so will my neighbors. But more importantly, the long-term impact. The aesthetic character of our neighborhood is gone. The hillside is gone. Mature vegetation that exists is gone. Wildlife is gone. There are going to be approximately 200 new vehicles in this small intersection of local streets. Let's be real, 200 is more likely. And so I'll come back to today's topic, 17 units. 17 units means 34 parking spaces. 34 parking spaces, just to put this in orders of magnitude, is about four times the footprint of my home. Just these additional units that you're being asked to approve today is larger than four times, the parking alone is just four times my house. So as I close, I'd like to say I'm surprised that we're even talking about these, about, about this, with these gross nonconformities to plan and these discrepancies to plan. But I challenge you to require more from our planning team and from these developers, including a full audit of the calculations to make sure we do have these numbers right, to require a conforming site plan that prioritizes all of the requirements of our code, not just the calculation of units. And I challenge you to please not put our city at risk of legal action by discriminating under the Fair Housing Act. We have also talked a lot about the need for this housing. It's not workforce housing. There are very few people in this town who will be able to afford this housing. And so if nothing else, I challenge you to actually look at the real numbers of what's available in housing today before saying, we need enough, we don't have enough. I challenge you to look at what is actually available in market rate housing in Prescott. Open up your Zillow app. Right now, City of Prescott, over 300 units, not filtering for anything that's in this core. That's a lot of units that are vacant right now. I don't have the answers to that. Again, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you considering other elements as you make this decision.
Thank you, ma'am. I have warned the audience about outbursts. If this occurs again, I will ask people to leave. Am I understood? This is a meeting to share information, not a meeting to give applause or shout-outs. Next, Jacob?
Uh, next speaker is Darrell Brown.
Good day. My name is Darrell Brown. I live at 536 South Marina, and I own 534 South Marina. Thank you for your service to Prescott and for taking on the challenging task of balancing what is right, what is legal, and what's best for our city. I want to start by saying I'm not anti-development. I recognize the potential benefits that developing this property could bring to downtown, and I respect the developer's goal of maximizing their return on investment. It's reasonable. However, I think the proposed rezone raises significant concerns that I believe outweigh the benefits. Other people have mentioned, at the previous meeting, the developers argued that the number of units would remain the same regardless of the rezone, with adjustments only to the unit distribution, and that was a reasonable request. The basis for this new rezone will directly result in an increase in the number of units, which substantially alters the scope and impact of the project. Veronica and I, we came here several years ago and lived downtown. I had a multifamily unit downtown, a triplex, and we lived in one unit and worked on another during nights and weekends, and we would walk the streets of this downtown. And we fell in love with this city. It is so beautiful and full of character, and it's why we're here, is the downtown and walking those streets. It's quite amazing, as everyone here knows. The current development is a, proposal is a stark departure from that neighborhood's character. The density and size of 106 units is entirely out of scale with the surrounding area. Adjacent to this proposed property is one fourplex, one duplex, one commercial building, and seven single-family homes. Now, I know that we are trying to fit a lot of people into downtown, and that makes sense for a lot of good reasons. But if we fit so many people, at some point, nobody else is really going to want to be here because we've lost what, what we, why we want to be here. So it's, as in all things, we want to compromise and come out with this where it still respects the character of the neighborhood, as well as honoring the rights of the property developers as well. Okay. I have to read my own writing, sometimes gets tricky. So I would like to consider an alternative path or alternative pass. I don't necessarily have the right ones, but I think compromises are a great way to work through these kinds of things. So right now, the city has a bargaining chip, and it's this rezone. And once you give that away, you're done with your power, and we're done with our power as a city. We just follow the requests. I would encourage the city and developers to seek a compromise that aligns with neighborhood interests, city interests, and developer interests. Could we consider keeping the capacity the same as was previously suggested and swapping the three lots that are flat and easy to build on and lower down, which is the proposal, with the hillside that's up, that's, uh, has very steep grades, it's a lot of mature vegetation, and a three-story unit or a two-story unit are going to block neighbors, single-family houses that are very close. Regardless of what was presented earlier, it's a fact. So my home is up against a three-story, and it does drop down there, but there's no doubt that it will significantly block. It's 15 feet away, so it's going to have a huge impact. That hill of beans is very tall compared to my house, so. So I would encourage possibly swapping the lots and not reducing any of the current capacity, but trying to preserve some of the less dense up on the view side, and that would go a long ways to placating the neighborhood, as well as hopefully creating an easier, buildable site for the developer as well. Another possible compromise is to revise the plan to make some effort to respect the neighborhood character. Place parking and dumpsters behind the buildings. Emphasize some landscaping and buildings up front along the street so it feels like a residence, not like a strip mall. Conclusion, you have, part of what we are asked to do, what you are asked to do, is to consider the character of the neighborhood. And the truth of this issue can be found just using common sense. If you walk around the neighborhood adjacent to the proposed site, it reveals its character. It's single-family homes, it's duplexes, it's modest multifamily structures, not high-density developments on this scale. We're already going to get one, and that's reasonable. It probably is a better use of what's going on there right now, and so I'm, that's fine. But adding to that is making this disparity of what exists there right now that much more egregious. The decision to approve or deny this rezone will have lasting consequences to the people who live right next to it. And, and to Prescott as a whole, I urge you to prioritize preserving the character of the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, point of order. We usually restrict comments to about four minutes, and I know that you sometimes go over when somebody's making a point by a minute or two. There are a lot of people here today that want to talk, and we have another, another item that's coming up that are going to want to have a lot of people talking about it as well. I would ask for you to consider, as the vice chair, I would ask you to consider the time limitation and sticking to that time limitation. I would ask the speakers to be more succinct with their things, and if somebody's already said something that needed to be said, if you could not say it again, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Jacob, how many more people do we have that want to speak?
Two more for this topic.
Two more, okay. Let's go ahead, but I agree with Tom. Try to keep it down to a four-minute and not repeating on that. So the next one, Jacob?
Next speaker is Al Sargent.
Good morning. My name is Al Sargent, 806 Standing Point, and I'm president of the Homeowners Association of Summit Point HOA, which has neighbors directly to the south and directly to the west, and I think you heard Paul earlier today. So I represent the HOA board. Thank you for your consideration today. I won't reiterate what Paul and Veronica and Darrell have said because we most strongly support what they're talking about with respect to character. And so we would respectfully ask today that as you consider the approach, that it's an easy answer to say no to the additional 16 and still meet the objective of the Planning and Zoning Commission and what we're trying to achieve for the city. So we would urge you today on that no. One of our primary considerations, it's not been talked about today, is the path to downtown. From our HOA, which represents about 60 homes, I think we got 59 or whatever, we have a egress, ingress down through this neighborhood to Marina Street. And then that's our access to downtown where we walk and some of us work, et cetera, et cetera. One of the earlier discussions was vacating the easement on Marina Street to make it go away, to make the development work a little bit better. And we mentioned then, and we just want to make sure now, that one of our primary concerns is that we continue to have access to Marina Street and downtown. But we urge no vote today on the additional 16. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jacob?
Last speaker is Gary Arnold.
Good morning. I'm Gary Arnold, 386 Rim Trail, Prescott, Arizona. In August of 2021, my, my business partner and I, a guy named Larry Solon's North Sky Development, we purchased a, or we went into contract on a property at 315 South Cortez. It's a zoned business general. We developed a plan and presented that at a PAC meeting and was told that because of parking and because of egress onto Cortez Street, that our plan was likely to be denied. So parking and traffic was the issue that, 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 that led them to believe that our, our plan was going to be denied. This project doesn't look like it meets code as far as parking goes, and Larry and I didn't know about the, the, the senior, the designating, you know, some of the units as senior. We didn't know about that, and, and I kind of feel like that's a gimmick in order to enable this project to have fewer parking spaces than it should have. If I kind of look out here, I bet everybody here's, would be considered a senior, and I bet everybody here drove down here, you know? So, so, uh, traffic and, and, and parking is, is, I, I, I feel like this project needs to comply with all the city codes, just like Larry and I had to comply with the city codes as far as parking and traffic. We're a little smaller operation, smaller project than this, but, but we just think that this project needs to have the same, be treated the same way, same consideration as, as our project was. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Tom?
Yeah, Tom Hutchinson. Listening to this, where I come out is that parking and height are the two main considerations here in front of us. And I'm thinking about how to craft a motion that allows this to continue but respects the, the, those two considerations.
I have a question for Tammy before we get to a motion. We have approved a previous motion concerning this property back in May. If we approve this agenda item, that would negate that previous one. Is that correct?
Correct.
If we don't approve this agenda item, that previous one still stays in effect?
No, just overrides it.
No. So if this is declined, then it's, there's nothing. It has to go back to ground zero. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it can go forward to city council, they're, they're the appeal body, so they, they'd have the final say. So if your recommendation is denial of this request, it'll be up to the city council if they uphold that or to approve it or abandon it or what.
Okay, so basically, our one in the May is gone.
Yes.
With this coming back in, it's gone.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out.
Tammy, I have a question as well. I want to make sure that everybody understands that what we're talking about here is the building that is in the red outlined area, that we're only talking about the rezoning of that area. The rest of the apartments are allowed by right. So there's absolutely nothing that we can do to say or do for them not to continue with everything else that's there. Is that correct?
Correct. If this was denied, that would only be able to be used as a parking area with no buildings.
Thank you.
Tammy, does that mean it reverts back to the May decision?
No. That means that they would be allowed a maximum of 90 units, and then that area in red would only be able, be able to be used as a parking area.
I have another question. If it's single-family, would the developer not have the right to build single-family homes on that to lease out as rentals?
Yes, they could put three single-family residences on the three lots and rent them, and rent them out.
Any other discussion?
Well, I, I'm kind of surprised that the previous, previous action by the planning commission goes away. So I, like I said before, I was pleased with what was proposed, and, and I, I sympathize with the speakers with regards to transitions. I mentioned that before in the May meeting, that it's too bad we have high-density, 32 to the acre, right up next to seven to the acre property, and there's no consideration for transition. So I understand, I understand what the question is before us, but it's, it's mind-boggling.
If no other comments?
Mr. Chairman, just one simple comment, and then I'll lead into a motion, if that's okay. I think that Commissioner Hutchinson makes a good point that it would be nice to be able to come up and craft some sort of compromise with this particular motion. I don't think that's possible, and it's really not our business to do that. So given that, I think that with the way, however this thing goes down, the owners and the architects on this project will have their work cut out for them one way or the other. So given that, I'm going to move to approve REZ 24-003 and GPA 24-001.
Before we go to a second, Tammy, can we take both of these at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? Jacob?
Commissioner Kloszewski?
Disapprove.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Disapprove.
Commissioner Davis?
Disapprove.
Vice Chair Riley?
Approve.
Chair Michaelman?
When this came before us in May, I voted for it. I have a challenge with the changes on this because, to be honest, it appears it's all in favor of the developer on this, and there is nothing that is... in favor of the developer on this, and there is nothing that is helping the community except for 16 extra units on that. I would support the one we did in May, but I cannot support this one, so I disapprove.
So the motion fails four to two. Do we need to have another vote?
If you want to, it may make it clear for the council if you want to deny the motion and take a second, just so they understand. You don't have to do it. It's up to you.
I say just let it go to the council the way it is.
We have two, or at least one council member here that hopefully has understood what the thoughts are from the commission members. So, okay?
Next item?
It's 10 o'clock. We have an interesting one coming up here. Should we take a little break for about five minutes here? And thank you all for coming. We appreciate that.
2022. It's been a very interesting process and our, we have an 11-member committee that was very patient with staff, too. We kind of threw them some curveballs through the process and we'll go through that process to get the document that we have today that we're really excited about. So this kind of goes through the process. Like I said, we started in '22. That was basically staff getting organized. We were researching the census data as it was coming out because it was very slow coming out after the 2020 census. We were looking at other general plans to see what people were doing, how they were formatting it, how they were looking at it. And so to kind of get an idea of what we wanted to do. Then the council approved the creating the citizen review committee. It was an 11-member committee, which comprised of citizens and people from our different boards and commissions to be part of it. We created a website, the Plan Prescott website, and then we started creating handouts and surveys. So this is the website, Plan Prescott, Planning the Future, Preserving the Past, because that is very important to us that as we're looking to the future, that we are preserving our past. We know Prescott has a lot of history and we want to maintain that. So again, '22 is when we started the process. And '23, the website was launched. We created a survey that went out and we tried to get as many people to get involved. And that was out there for probably about a year. We had that survey out with input from different departments and the committee. We had two open, we had one open house in the summer 2023. We had about 200 people show up at that open house. It was at the Adult Center. One thing to take in consideration in '23, we had a lot of things going on in the city. We had, you know, different projects coming through. We had the Save the Dells. We had the Sun Dog Connector proposal being reviewed. And we have other controversial projects. So we had a lot of input when we got to that. And it was basically a bunch of tables set up with asking for input on different things like goals and strengths and weaknesses that we have and things that we need to address. So we had a whole lot of input from the survey and from that open house before we started updating the plan. So in, also in '23, the American Planning Association, they, they gave an award to Greensboro, North Carolina for their comprehensive plan. So we went to look at it. We're like, hey, let's see what this looks like. Well, in reviewing state statutes, it says, this is what you have to have in a general plan. These elements or whatever you want to call. And then, but it doesn't say how you have to show that or how you have to format that. So we looked at Greensboro. They've been through a different, you know, North Carolina has different criteria, but they came up these six big ideas, six big themes that came out of it. And also it was a really cool document because it's an e-reader, so you can like click on it. It flips the page and it had noises to flip the page, too. So we were kind of impressed with that. But we really liked the way they formatted it. So we kind of looked at that and I came before the general plan committee at the end of '23, say, hey, we want to try something different, totally different than what we've ever done before. And what most of the other jurisdictions, some of them have kind of done something similar, but not to this capacity. So we created five different goals, resiliency and sustainability, a community connected, great places and neighborhoods, economic competitiveness and prosperity, and community quality. And we kind of put all the required elements as required and filter them into these categories, which is what you have before you now. So in '24, we had, all the departments did presentations to the general plan committee to go over things like what are issues they're seeing, what are obstacles they have, what has been implemented since the last general plan? We also did learn that some departments didn't know we had a general plan. So we tried to rectify that real quick. So now everyone knows in the city that we have a general plan and that we are going to be implementing this. So all the goals and strategies that all the different departments put in it, we're going to keep track of them. So, so the new format was approved. The new chapters, as we started writing them and formatting them, went into this new format. We had the committee and city leadership review the draft and provide more input as we went, moved along. At the August 28th meeting, the general plan committee voted to move the draft forward to the 60-day public comment period, which was a huge step. We felt that the plan was complete enough that we can move it forward to get the public comment. That ran from September 23rd to November 21st. And there's a spreadsheet that was included in the agenda packet that has all the comments that we received. And then also our comments of how we can address it or if we can address it. Because a lot of comments that we receive are people's ideas, but stuff that, that isn't really considered in the general plan. Because the general plan is a 30,000-foot view, the overall view. Then as you look at different plans and studies and master plans, that's the more, more boots on the ground look at it or a comprehensive or strategic plans are more boots on the ground, looking more fine tooth. This is just the overall view. We had two open houses. We didn't have as much input at those open houses or attendance like we did on the first, first one. People were meeting out. We also had things going on with the fire stations, you know, the public safety tax bill going out. People are getting kind of meetinged out. We understand. We've addressed, because all our meetings were open to the public, we had lots of public participating through this whole process, lots of input, and we always integrated all that input as we moved forward. So the 60-day public comment period ended on November 21st. Thank you for everyone that participated and provided comments. Comments were evaluated and presented to the general plan committee. And then at the December 11th meeting, the general plan moved it forward to this public hearing process. We felt we were done enough, did all we can, now let's move it forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then City Council. So any questions so far about that process from the?
Tammy, you mentioned that you're to be keeping track of the initiatives. Who will be responsible for that?
Us, community development.
Community development?
Yes. So we have a spreadsheet with all the goals and strategies and it's pretty similar to what you see in your, the back of the general plan under the implementation section.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering how the city manager is going to promulgate all these initiatives down to all the different staffs and, and how that will, how that will fit into the performance management system of the city. And I don't, I don't see community development being able to effectively manage all the things that's in here.
You don't need to be surprised. Some of these are already starting to be, to happen. You know, the water resources is already starting to process of a long-range water management plan. Public Works is already looking into becoming a Tree City USA. So this is already happening. We all communicate, the department heads communicate, and as the strategic plans start coming up every year, they're re-looking at it, we're going to remind them, hey, look at this general plan. Here's some goals and strategies we might want to look at. And we can be the reminder or our director to the department heads about, hey, remember there's a general plan, there's goals and strategies, we might want to take this into consideration.
So is it, is it fair to say that the department heads will have specific objectives speaking to this plan?
I'm George Worley. I'm the planning manager. I'm not going to step on Tammy's toes. She's doing great. The, the concern about all of those comments and future implementation of those is partly going to be up to all of these folks behind us. One of the things that we've talked about all through the general plan process is to take those lists of goals and strategies and make sure they're posted in public places that people can get to them and people can hold their elected officials responsible for implementing the things that they have asked for. So while we may be managing some of the flow of things, the overall process will devolve down to the different departments. It will be because this is going to be a very public document, both the plan itself and the implementation strategies, that, that spreadsheet that has all of those goals and strategies.
So, so what recourse does the public have if stuff isn't getting done?
I, we get the vote every two years. That's one recourse. The other is simply staying in touch, being able to contact your elected official and saying, hey, you know, the general plan goal that I'm all in favor of isn't being addressed and, and put that kind of information into a higher level of cognition, I guess, of the council. Council gets bombarded by things that they have to prioritize. And one way for them to prioritize is to hear from the public.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
One thing to point out is that no matter what we do with the general plan and no matter what the council does with the general plan, no matter what the voters do with the general plan, there's no requirement that it needs to be followed by decisions that the council will make in the future or this body. There is absolutely none. That's been shown the last time around several times, but there's absolutely no requirement to be able to follow through with that, with the exception of the land use plan. You can't change the land use plan without a major amendment in most cases.
Which is a great segue to our next section. So the one thing that, the part of the general plan that we as staff, planning staff bring forward to you, in a lot of our staff, most and all our staff reports, we say, hey, it's in conformance with the general plan. And that's with the land use map. So we have the general plan, future land use map that you just saw with the last application. We had these three parcels that were designated as single-family residential. Still don't know how that happened, but you know, it did. So that's, that's the map that this body really can look at and also the major plan amendment criteria to require major plan amendment, which is totally different than what we had before. So ARS 9-461.06N regards to land use map. So in that, implying an open space element or a growth element of a general plan, a municipality shall not designate private land or state trust land as open space, recreation, conservation, or agriculture unless the municipality receives written consent of the landowner or provides an alternative economically viable designation in the general plan or zoning ordinance allowing at least one residential dwelling unit per acre. So either we can have the map that says we cannot designate private, private property or state trust land as open space, we have to allow at least one dwelling unit per acre, or we change our zoning code that if we designate areas as open space, we'd have to allow one dwelling unit per acre, which kind of defeats the purpose of having open space to allow residential development. So this is the original land use map that went to the general plan committee. We, we were kind of new about that part of the statute, but this was kind of similar to the map that was before. So we started digging into, the state statute was brought to our attention, too, by large landowners, the State Land Department in Deepwater Ranch, that, you know, hey, you need to look at the statute to make sure you're in compliance with it. We're like, yeah, that makes sense. So we did have this very low-density residential. So we updated the map to take out. So what we changed in the maps, so we had a very low-density residential, which was less than one dwelling unit per acre, which we had for some of the areas of state trust land and Deepwater Ranch. And that doesn't comply with state statutes. You have to allow at least one dwelling unit per acre. So what we did to simplify it was remove the very low-density residential and those areas of state trust land and Deepwater Ranch and other private properties, because we really took a close look at the map at that point, and we designated them over to the low, low to medium density residential, which allows one to seven dwelling units per acre. So we changed some things on the map. This was a wash, so we had to take that green line out. We also, where was the other areas? Okay. This is private property. This is where Ecosha is. It's private property. We had it designated as open space. We changed that. We changed these areas here. These were hilltops that were protected, trying to be protected, but then our hillside development criteria was implemented. And then we had this area where the Sun Dog was going to go that we changed, that could, had to be changed, too, on that portion of the map. And then some other areas that we found that were state trust land that were designated as open space, we changed those. And then we started looking at also master plans because we kind of forgot about AED had a master plan where they had open space and they had some areas designated for multifamily. So we had this one changed back to multifamily, which matches our zoning map and the master plans. We had a look at the master plans. This green area here was changed back to open space because all of that is designated open space areas as part of the master plan, AED's master plan. And then we have the Glassford Dells Regional Park. So we updated the map to come in compliance. So right now, what we have presented in front of you meets all the statutory requirements that we feel meets statutory requirements, that state land and private properties have the loaded medium-density residential and then the open space areas are areas that have already been designated as open space.
Tammy, when we show open space on the map here, basically that's a large open space. We're not going to try to show where HOAs have open space in there, right?
Some of them we do. Some of these areas are golf courses and areas that were designated as part of their master plans as open space. So we have captured as much as those as that we could, too. So areas that are zoned open space or have been designated as open space in master plans or development approvals, we've tried to capture as many of those as we can that we have in our zoning layers in our GIS database. So in changing that, we had to take, change our, so this is the criteria for requiring a major plan amendment. In the last general plan, we learned that we never had a major plan amendment. There's nothing that's triggered it because it required large acreages next to very high density development. And that's not what we're seeing. We were seeing master plans in areas come in, in the outskirts of the area with no development nearby. So nothing ever triggered it. So we started looking at, the general plan committee asked us to look at a map, get it, produce a map that shows these are the vacant parcels that we have in the city and this is about the size they are. So as planning staff, we started looking at that map and we're like, well, what areas could be really highly affected with some changes? And so we tried to create some triggers that made sense more from a planning perspective and the impact it could have on a neighborhood. But one thing we had to change was we had to take out the very low density because we took that off the land use map. So this is our new chart. So we took out the very low density. We just have the low to medium density. We do have, if it's going for low to medium density to a medium to high density, 20 acres would be the trigger to cause it to be a major plan amendment. Major plan amendments require to go through a 60-day public comment period and then we need a supermajority vote from the city council for approvals. That's what the major plan amendment does. When this growing smarter legislator, legislation was created, they gave the jurisdictions the capability to see what would trigger the major plan amendments. We saw a lot of those changing because of the perspective of solar coming to the state back in the 2000s, early 2000s. They're increasing it, so nothing was triggering major plan amendments. And the way the state law read, too, major plan amendments can only be heard once a year. So somebody had to apply by like June to be heard in December and all the major plan amendment projects would be all heard at one time in the jurisdiction. Couple of years ago, they changed that. A major plan amendment has to be heard within 12 months of it being submitted. So now it could be heard any time of year. So it's no, kind of watered down the major plan amendment process from a planning perspective. There was a lot of us that were opposed to it, but, so a lot of the jurisdictions down the valley, they wanted more flexibility of when these could be heard and the legislator, legislation went with that. So, but we do have these triggers of acreage that triggers what a major and a minor would require. Minor, just like you saw, goes with a minor map amendment with the rezoning request. You only see these with rezonings. That's the only thing that triggers us looking at the map and this chart are rezonings. Are any questions about this so far? This is a major thing for you guys as the Planning and Zoning Commission, because this is, these are the things that are going to trigger if you see something come through for a major or a minor plan amendment. So our next meeting is January 30th. Per state law, we have to have two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, but one has to be at a remote location. So January 30th is your regular scheduled meeting, but we're going to have it at the Prescott Centennial Center on Clubhouse Drive by the airport. What we're asking from you as a committee is to read through the plan and we have another copy if somebody doesn't have a paper copy. So to submit questions or comments to me while you're reading it. If any chapters you have questions on, let me know. Give us any direction. And then we are hoping for a possible recommendation at the next meeting, but we do have a buffer meeting in February if we need it. So we're asking you to send comments and what we'll do is we'll be creating a spreadsheet with your guys' comments or questions and then we'll have a way about how we're answering it and that'll be included in the next packet and be available so the public can, and you can see all the questions that we've received. And that concludes my presentation for today and I'm free to answer any questions. This was a start.
Questions for Tammy?
Well done, Tammy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we proceed, you know, I had mentioned that four of the commission members were involved in the general plan. We have other members of the general plan committee in the audience. If you could raise your hand so people know who to blame on this, would appreciate it there on that. Thank you on that. And I appreciate the work you all put in on this, too. I can guarantee it was a lot of time and effort on that.
I have a.
Tom?
I have a, I have a recommendation.
Okay.
That's not really a question. It's actually two things, Tammy. Number one, could you briefly take us through what this plan says, the key points? And then number two, adjacent to that, is is there, is there the ability to add a abstract, a executive summary or a preface to this that basically takes all of the public through a very, very concise one or two paragraph statement that basically coalesces all of this and says where we're headed?
Are we able to give a very concise summary of the general plan? Having sat through that, I'm having concerns that it's be difficult to have a concise summary.
I know people that do that for a living. Okay?
So the, the goal was that this is the big plan, the meat. And then our goal is that once we have something, we get it approved by city council, moving forward to the voters, we, our goal was to create a shorter version, like that has a summary with the goals and strategies, that, that's kind of the Cliff Note version of it in a way. That's, that's kind of our goal with the consultants. You know, we, I did not create this very beautiful looking plan. I wish I had the time, since this was part of my job, my other job I have. But our consultants, we were working with them to create, once this is approved by city council, to create a Cliff Note version of it, like you said, of it.
Tammy, the reason I ask, I, I've read this plan now twice, maybe two and a half times or more, and, and I find it difficult to tie it all together into, into what it, what it really says for the city of Prescott going forward over the next 10-year period.
That's a very big topic. We can try to do something for the next meeting to kind of summarize probably each chapter, if you like.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hutchinson, I think, has got a point. I guess the other point to be made by Tammy was that we don't know what this plan is going to be including, we don't know what this plan's going to be including until after the council approves it and to go to the voters. And then at that point, once you know what's going to be in the plan, then you can do the summary of that plan. But right now, doing the summary, I just think is make, it's make-work for the city, for the staff to be able to do that right now at, at this particular juncture. I'd wait till after the council. I'd recommend we wait till after the council has reviewed it and made any changes they're going to make before we know what it is that we're going to be putting toward the voter for that Cliff Note summary.
Tom, I, I don't, I don't want to strongly object to that, but I think we need to make it easy for the council to understand also what's in this thing.
Well, contrary to, contrary to popular belief, they're pretty smart people on the council.
Mr. Chairman, I think a part of the, part of our responsibility, and maybe a product of what happens next, in the next meeting or the next meeting, whatever the case may be, in our recommendation, is that hopefully we will have some questions that summarize the issues that are coming forward. In other words, the, the answer to some of the comments that we will be making may, may facilitate a, a better understanding of what's said in the text. Okay? And I'll give you an example. I sent a couple of comments to Tammy earlier as, as I was going through this. And one of the things is water, for example. Water, there's got a lot of, it's got a lot of text in water, but you know, the, the bottom line is, is there enough water? And where, where does it come from? You know? And so if we, if we can, we have enough knowledge, I mean, we, the, the four of us have sat on another, and the committee members have enough information that we've gone through that we could hopefully ask those succinct question to get succinct answers. And that, that is, that includes our recommendation to the city council.
Jacob, did we have anybody who wanted to speak before us on this right now?
Yes, we have quite a few who would like to speak.
Okay. First?
First speaker would be Linda Nichols.
Good morning, Chairman Michelson.
Ma'am.
And the Planning and Zoning.
Can you pull the microphone down and talk into it, please? Thank you.
So good morning to Chairman Michelson and the Planning and Zoning Committee members. My name is Linda Nichols. I live at 2287 Sequoia Drive and I have been a very involved resident of Prescott for about 14 years. And I want to thank you for holding this forum today. And yes, this document is very long and I agree, a summary would be nice, but I can't imagine how it could be done. So first, I would also like to thank the, the General Planning Committee members for all of their hard work and extensive effort that they put into writing this 2025 general plan. And it is supposed to be a Prescott land use guide. So, and it is supposed to last for the next 10 years. Now, I know some of you are, have been on planning committees before, general planning committees, and I just want to say that if a document is supposed to last 10 years, there's a lot of information in here that is already obsolete and I'll, I'll reference that as I go. So while reading through this comprehensive document, I must say that I did learn a lot of valuable information, especially in the area of statistics. I wanted to give them credit in that area. I would now like to share my opinion and my part is going to be on very specific parts of this document. So I want to share that with you. And I have given you all a set of notes. So basically it says just about everything I'm going to say, so you'll have those notes to refer to. So starting on page 35 and 36, which happens to be the introduction, which came from the document that was sent out by the city, it's the introduction to this plan. And the first thing it says, this is a guide for land use decisions in Prescott, Arizona. And I can see so many places in here that I just cannot connect what's in here with land use. So you might want to look at that. Again, it's so long, it's hard to pick them all out. On this very page, it has a Prescott vision. And my background is, I have a business degree and my minor was in instructional material design. And the problem with this is you have a, you have a vision for Prescott on page 35 and then you have a completely different vision for Prescott on page 36. And that is just not, that, you know, having a guide that go two different directions already complicates things. So the first vision on page 35 has, the whole second half of that paragraph is all about diversity and, you know, I would just say that paragraph, half of it is woke. And I don't think that belongs in a land use document. So I suggest that that vision on page 35 be replaced with the vision on page 36, which is much more in line with what a vision is supposed to be than the one on 35. And. And so that's my comment on that one. And then go to the next page, please. And I skip over to page 39. And these are the six elements that they're talking about as livability goals that was on one of, on the slides that Tammy showed. And under the third one down, great places, you mentioned dark skies. And dark skies is not a simple thing to accomplish. It, it costs a lot of money, it takes a lot of time, it's a big initiative. And so my question to you, and maybe I can't, I don't know if it was Thomas Davis or Tom Riley that said this, but it, it, does this, if it goes into this plan, does that make it us obligated to do it? Because dark skies in here is a big deal, it's mentioned in several places, yet nobody has voted on that, nobody has approved that. And so, you know, personally, I like seeing the stars at night, and I like all that, too. But dark skies is a whole different program that if you're going to promote that, and if you're going to put it in here, I just think it hasn't been approved by anybody. That's just the committee picking that out to put in here. Then on page 59, it states in 2019, six years ago, the department, and all through this, they say the department. And they are referring to the fire department, but they don't say that. It says completed a comprehensive community risk assessment that is in the foundation for assessing the risks faced by the community. Well, six years ago, are you, are you saying that none of this has been updated in six, in, in those years? That we couldn't put in more relevant information? Because it does say on the number six of that list, and my list is seven, so I might have an older copy. But it says that the current resources allocated to the department, not fire, are insufficient to effectively manage its current responsibilities. Well, we just passed Proposition 478, and that is not true any longer. But yet, it's in this document that's going to last for 10 years. So they haven't updated it since 2019. That, to me, is not something I would be proud to put out to the public. I know it's a lot of work to put all this information into a document, and it takes a lot of time, but you have to keep it current. Then on page five, you list, on page 162, on page five of this that I gave you, on page 162 in the document, you list youth programs. You start with the Launchpad, you go to Boys and Girls Club, nurture Ninos, Niños Prescott, Teen Task Force. Well, as an instructional designer, that was my career, you don't put things into a 10-year document that could easily change in a month, in a year. So you're getting so specific to list these youth programs that you're going to, you know, make your document obsolete in no time. There's a lot of that in this document, where they have taken specific things that could change. You have to be a little bit more higher level and say that we have plenty of youth programs, that's a good thing. But to list the ones we have right now, you know, there's no guarantee that they will last 10 years. And then on 69, just to refer to the water part, it says by 2010, so we're talking 15 years ago, construction plans were prepared and partial easements for pipelines were obtained. And it goes on. My point on this one is that in the last 15 years, we haven't done anything with water that we could update this part on, because this is old. And it's, we've worked on the Big Chino, there have been surveys done on the Big Chino. And it says in here that it was put on hold for ongoing legal action. That's been going on for 15 years when it comes to water in this, in this particular environment, that where water is so important. So what I would say is that whole section needs to be reworked to something more current. And then last, little things. On page 41, you're talking about Phase Four FY 2025. And you end that paragraph by saying the general plan was then put on a primary election ballot to be passed. How can you pass something in a section that's not, it's just starting in 2025? So there's something wrong with that whole paragraph. We couldn't have passed it by now. It needs to say will be passed, or should be passed, or to be passed, not that it passed. And then lastly, just to typo, on page 49, you have an extra "and," A-N-D, that is, is wrong. So you just need to take that out. Mine have already been taken out because, you know, I know that I might have an old copy. That's the other thing. When you write specs for, like, I was in semiconductor, you, you number the versions. I could not find any numbers on the versions of this document. So I don't know if I'm looking at an old document, a new document, or whatever. It really needed to be managed better so we could keep all the versions in, you know, in place. So thank you for all your time and effort in creating this document to this point. It is my hope that you listen to and incorporate the many suggestions that you will be given today. I believe by doing so, it will ensure that this document is up to date and therefore more relevant. After all, it is going into a 10-year plan. So I just want to thank you for all your time. And I want to just say one thing, I have to leave, I have an appointment. But I know a lot of other people's presentations, and make no mistake, I'm with them on everything that they're saying. So it's just something, this document is not quite written properly. It's out of date, and it has issues. And I would be embarrassed to give this to somebody that for the next 10 years, say eight years down the road, it's going to be way out of date. Sorry, I hate to say that, because I know it's a ton of work. But, and I appreciate everybody's working on this, but that's how I feel. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Jacob?
Next speaker is Ann Brekwald.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Ann Brekwald. I have lived in this area for 20 years, as of November 30th. I lived in, I have been very active in the community for, for most of that time. And I apologize that I have not been involved in this process at all, because I would have liked to have been. But I lived in Prescott Valley and then in the county, and we moved into Prescott proper in August. So this is my first exposure to being involved in it. I did review a bulk of the document, and the comment I have is on a legal basis. On the introduction with the Prescott vision, that is my topic. And I have concerns about the inference that I took from reading that, that the city itself, the city of Prescott, as it's even described in the paragraphs, the city of Prescott government and Perrin's cap city, usually legally stands for the city, government itself, seem to be presenting itself as an advocate for people who may suffer from exposure to discrimination or harassment. And I find that, I don't know if there's been a discussion with the city attorney or not, but there are many laws, federal, state, local, against discrimination and harassment. There's a list of people who could be identified as being in a certain category that could receive that treatment. And I appreciate the intent of being an advocate for people who are being harassed or discriminated against. But there is a whole legal system that handles those conditions. There are civil rights laws, there are attorney's court readings, there has to be investigations if there's a claim made. That puts two people or two entities involved, the accuser and the accused. And my fear for the city government is if they position themselves as an advocate for the accused, or for anybody who has a claim of discrimination, that puts them in a position that there's a whole legal system to handle all that. So there is protection. I appreciate protection for the citizens of the city, but all citizens, all inhabitants, not ones who may fit into a category that makes them more vulnerable, but everybody. But again, my fear is if the city government becomes an advocate, they, to me, that gives them a liability. That if the decision that is made in the court routines goes against the claimant, they could turn around and have a complaint against the city government for not protecting them. So I don't know what the city legal attorney would say about it, but I think it should be looked into and, and not put the city government in position to be liable for non-support of people who assume they are being supported by the city. That's my find, my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jacob, how many more do we have?
Three more.
Three more? For the person who's coming up, to repeat what has already been said is kind of, in a sense, wasting your time. So we'd like to have more new information on that, okay? So Jacob?
Next speaker is Ralph Hess.
Good morning, commissioners, good to see you again. This is Ralph Hess, I live in Prescott. I'm here to challenge the staff's interpretation of the statute-- yeah, thanks, Tammy-- of ARS, ARS 9-461.06. This issue was brought to, oh, and by the way, I'm also on the general plan committee, so I'm one of the culprits. This was brought, this concern was brought to us by staff at our December meeting. And subsequent to that meeting, I, I looked more acutely at this particular provision and how it would impact the land use map and the, the table for major plan amendments. If you look at N, subsection N, what it says is, and I agree with the understanding that the land use map shall not designate private land or state land as open space recreation, conservation, or agriculture unless certain conditions are met. One, if you look at the bottom of the last portion of that provision of, there was a golf course involved. But the, the, the way I read the statute, it does not require a designation of at least one dwelling unit per acre if you're not going to be designating private property or state land trust as open space. So it's not both. Not that you have to not designate as open space and also provide at least one dwelling unit per acre. So I'd like to have that addressed more by the legal department between now and your meeting on January 30th. And Tammy, if you would please show the land use map before you took out very low density. As you can see on the designations for very low density and low medium density, very low density is less than one dwelling unit per acre. And low to medium density is one to seven dwelling units per acre. If staff's going to insist on its interpretation of the statute to require that you not designate private land or state land trust as open space, and you must provide that all private land or state land must have at least one dwelling unit per acre, I'd suggest changing the definition of very low density by putting an equal sign under the less than sign. And make it very low density would be equal to or less than one dwelling unit per acre. That way, you don't have to take very low density out of the major plan amendment table. And you don't have to take very low density out of the land use map. If you did that, you'd have to change the definition of low to medium density to two to seven dwelling units per acre. That would be the alternative. I don't think you even have to do that. I think the, I think the statute's being misinterpreted. Excuse me. Also, we didn't have the chance at the December meeting to see the letter from Deepwell Ranch or the comments from State Land Trust. I don't think either Deepwell Ranch or the State Land Trust is suggesting that they have to have at least one dwelling unit per acre in their property. When I looked at the exhibit that Deepwell Ranch had provided, I think, I think the advocate, Mr. Polk, is correct in identifying some of the property that is currently designated as very low density probably should be low to medium density. But I don't think all of it needs to be. Lot of the portion way up north is next to State Land Trust, and there's no, no low-medium density property nearby. So I think portion of it could be very low density, portion of it could be low-medium density. And you're the group that can probably make that decision more clearly than the general plan review committee. But that, I believe, should be a rationale based on land uses, not on misinterpretation of the statute. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice, so I'll leave it there. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Jacob?
Next speaker is Michelle Hammer.
Hello. My name is Michelle Hammer. I'm a 20-year resident. I live at 801 Downer Trail in Prescott. I submitted a six-page document of my comments on the general plan during the comment period. I spoke at the last meeting, so I'm just going to keep this short and sweet for you. Because today, I just want to focus on the essential point, that this is a land usage plan. Its primary purpose should be to outline how Prescott manages land to generate money and support development, infrastructure, and growth in a way that aligns with the community's needs and values. In the last election, Prescott voted for fiscal responsibility, conservative values, and personal freedoms by a large majority, and we will vote that way again. This plan includes several initiatives that are not directly related to land usage. They reflect unnecessary spending and government overreach, and they should be removed. Revitalization of Main Street, these projects are not fundamental about, fundamentally about land usage. They're about aesthetics and commerce, and they should be done through private investment, not public investment. The imposing environmental regulations due to climate change. Many of the proposed regulations overreach into controlling private property usage and would impose unnecessary burdens on property owners and businesses. They would stifle growth and development rather than manage land effectively. As the plan pointed out, our citizens' average age is 62 years old. For six decades, we've been fed a regular diet of climate change predictions that never happened. We are tired of agenda-driven fear mongering. Fun fact for you, in the year 1900, before cars and buildings and asphalt and concrete were put in Prescott, 1900, the highest temperature was 103. In 2024, the highest temperature in Prescott was 102. The environmental regulations in the general plan that need removal are dark sky compliant, I agree with Linda, the Tree City designation, and Vision Zero that would make every street look like Ross or Street, which is a complete disaster-- look like Ross or Street, which is a complete disaster. I don't even want to drive down that one. If you ask any 10-year new, or to new resident, they will tell you that they moved here to escape what the general plan is proposing. It's to have Prescott go woke and go broke. We need a land usage plan with efficient governance that respects our personal freedoms rather than an excuse to regulate our citizens' lives and spend taxpayers' dollars on non-essential feel-good politics when we are $150 million in debt and we're going to lose another $2 million in the rent tax revenue. On the affordable housing issue, Prescott's housing is an evolution brought on by market demand. We like our houses on big lots. And we don't have any misconceptions about acquiring affordable housing for ourselves or our children. It's been our lifelong journey. We understand what affordable housing looks like and its impact on the community. For many of us, our homes are largest asset, and we will vote against anything that threatens its value, even if it means rejecting the very valuable parts in this plan. The general plan must focus on land use that generates revenue, I'm going to say that again, generates revenue, and supports development, infrastructure, and responsible growth in a way that complies with Arizona statutes without compromising the community's needs and values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Jacob?
Next speaker, I believe it's Cheryl, could be Sherry. Hannah?
Good morning, chairman and members of the board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. So this morning, I'm going to speak on just one.
Excuse me, ma'am, we need to have name and address, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Sherry Hannah, 2503 Willow Creek Road. Okay. A long, long time resident here. I'm not going to tell you how long because you'll guess my age, but anyways, so what, I've had a lot of people inquire to me that have looked at this about the Tree, USA Tree program. And so I'm just, I'm just going to give a few items why I feel that, you know, this is something that should, probably should be removed from the plan and then taken and considered aside outside through council and those areas, because if you look at what goes involved in having a Tree USA City, you actually have to, as a requirement for, to establish a tree board or a department within your city, and then, and let me get this straight, I love trees, I'm a tree person, you know, I'm about protecting trees and everything, but you also have to have a tree arbiter, certified tree arbitrator on your staff. You have to adopt a tree ordinance, which, if you go and look at a lot of the ordinances that have been adopted by cities that became tree cities, they are very strict, some of them actually infringe on personal property rights, so that needs to be looked at very carefully. And then you have to designate a community forestry budget of at least $2 per capita, which that means per population. So with our Prescott's population of 48,000 people, that would be having a budget of 100, almost $100,000, so. And then you have to hold an Arbor Day observance, which, that's fine. But if you look at the requirements for having an arborist on your staff, these individuals are educated, they have, to have several degrees, their salaries start from anywhere from $46,000 to $65,000 plus benefits when you do that. And if you also have somebody that's going to be trained on your staff, a trainee, they require a salary of $30,000. So mainly, that a lot of these things that we're looking at in here are required, and I just feel like, you know, that some of these things, we don't need to have that on there, and like I said, they violate your personal property rights. So anyways, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Last speaker will be Stephen Polk.
Thank you. This is Stephen Polk, I'm the attorney for Deepwell Ranch. Commissioner, chairman, thank you. The first thing I would like to say is that we support the version of the land use plan that was recommended to you from the general, from the general plan committee, the one that's in front of you today, we do support that. But I appear responding to some comments from, from Mr. Hess here. We submitted a letter on the prior version of the general plan, this future land use map, but we had some concerns, one with compliance with the statute, and then, two, also just picking and choosing on the physical characteristics of the property. When you looked at the prior version of the map, the designation, it appeared as though the decision was really made based on who owned the property and not on the physical characteristics of the property. And what I mean by that is, we had this real concern that there was a selection for lower density on this future land use map based on that Deepwell Ranch is the owner of the land and not, if you go to the east side of the, of the airport, that, you know, the AED-owned land over there had a higher designation, and then, or if you go a little bit further west, you're looking at a higher designation over on the Granite Oaks, the undeveloped land over there. So, so I just want to say that, the, for the land use map that's been presented to you as recommended by the general plan committee, we support that, we think that's correct. This is a future land use map, this is not binding, right, this is not a zoning decision, this is where the direction is going to go, or where the city wants to see it go. But anyway, so we are supporting the current version in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's it, Jacob?
Yes, that was the last speaker.
All right. Tammy, you want to make any more comments?
Well, I mean, I think, we're going to have a lot, I think, more discussion on the non-discrimination language, we've seen that come up multiple times. It's one paragraph. We had the Martin Luther King Group come before the general plan committee back in early '24 and asked for a paragraph to be written in the general plan. They provided some language, I'm just going to go back some background here, and then the general plan committee voted to include it into the document, and it's been, it was rewarded and retweaked and discussed in like two or three meetings, and we actually had a special meeting just to discuss that paragraph to reward it, and what you see now is what the general plan committee voted on. So, that went through many reiterations, and so that's what's been moving forward. The dark skies, that was put in because when we did our survey back in '23, most of the citizens, a lot of people think we're a dark sky community. We have dark sky regulations for commercial, industrial, multifamily, just not single-family residential, except some HOAs do require dark sky requirements, so some residents already thought we were dark sky, and we have been reached out to by many groups, and our economic development people have had inquiries about becoming a dark sky community for marketing and such. So that is something we have already started kind of looking into. They will take some code amendments, it's nothing that, just because the plan's approved by the voters doesn't mean everything in here gets approved automatically. It has to go through different reiterations, or different processes, or code amendments, or other funding processes. But dark skies, that'd be something that'd have to be a land development code update for residential and a lot of education, so that would be something we would do later. Tree City USA, I actually, Public Works has already reviewed it, the criteria, and we already qualify, and they're already moving forward on that. So that's something that's already starting to be implemented through our Public Works Department, and they didn't see any issues or have any concerns with qualifying for that. So I just wanted to bring that up, that some of these things are already being implemented or been discussed, or there's other reasons why it's in the plan. So, those are, I think, were the big three things right now.
Okay. Any last comments? Susan?
I was, having spent 35-plus years in the field of taxation, I was somewhat surprised that we're so reliant on the transaction privilege tax. So if I understand that correctly, if we have a commercial or manufacturing project move in, it's really not going to benefit the city that much in terms of property tax, that most of the benefit would come from those employees spending money within the city. Is that correct?
Yes. I'm being told yes.
The, so that really pushes us more towards encouraging tourism. I, I hope that we plan accordingly and avoid some of the problems that Sedona has, especially with their traffic, and it's, it's made living in the city of Sedona difficult for the residents, dealing with all the tourists. You know, it's, having spent so much of my career in tax, I would love to tackle the issue of promoting more tax revenues for the city and exploring other ways.
And I believe that's in their goals and implementation of finding other ways, so that's what they'll be after the general plan worked on. Yes.
Jim?
I had a couple questions, while I was on dark skies, she answered it, but the other one is, being in real estate, I know that we're obligated by law to disclose a lot of information and control on what we can and cannot say regarding discrimination. I was just wondering if we're, as a city in this plan, obligated to put that language in the plan or not?
I'll try that one.
Thank you.
No, I don't think you're obligated to do it. And whether it goes in or doesn't go in, I don't think creates a huge concern on liability for the city. You know, I can read to you what the definition of a general plan is, and then you guys can decide whether or not it's something you're interested in taking on, or just, or just letting it go to the council. So let me find the definition. So in Arizona revised statute, section 9-461, it defines a general plan as "a municipal statement of land development policies that may include maps, charts, graphs, and text that set forth objectives, principles, and standards for local growth and redevelopment enacted under the provisions of this article or any prior statute." Then it goes through a laundry list of what the elements of a general plan are, and then you kind of make a decision as to whether or not that language is appropriate or not. It's fundamentally, kind of in my opinion, a political question, not a legal question. And ultimately, it'll be up to the city council to make the final kind of determination on that language. But that's kind of what we're looking at. It does not have to go in. I think it's rare, I haven't necessarily seen it in general plans, but doesn't mean it can't go in.
Any other comments? In our next meeting, we're also going to have it open for the public for their comments too, so I would welcome you to attend that meeting, even though it's not going to be at this place, we're going to be out at the golf course, right?
Yeah, at the Centennial Center on Clubhouse Drive. So it'll be a little bit different setting, but we think it'll work, and we had to have another place, so what I'm asking from the commission is, as you read through the general plan, send me questions, comments, everything within the next few weeks, so we can include it in the packet, and we can make sure that if we need other staff there to help answer questions, that we can have them there, or have an answer for you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a final comment, I can't, kind of came late on to the, I was a, let's say, a free agent or a sub to the general plan committee, and I just want to say that it's remarkable the amount of work that staff has done and the, and the committee has done to get it to this point, it's really remarkable, and it's, it's very comprehensive, and there's a lot of information in there, and I really appreciate everybody's participation.
Thank you.
Thank you. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for attending.